Good evening. The time being 7:00 PM, there being a quorum of 117 out of a necessary 100 registered voters, I now call Oxford's annual, not annual, special town meeting to order. My name is Russell Rowe and I have had the honor of being your town moderator for many years, and I thank you for that. I would like to note that the town clerk, a note from the town clerk, the receipt of the return of the posting of the warrant for the special town meeting by the constable. Next, I'd like to mention a note of safety. In case of fire or other emergency, the evacuation routes are located in the rear of the auditorium, which is the way most of you entered, as well as on both sides of the stage, in front of the auditorium. Please check to see if anyone near you needs assistance, especially if they are disabled. Now, please rise if you are able. Ladies and gentlemen, with hats in hands and hands over hearts, please stand to honor America as our national colors are presented, actually, they're right over here to my right, followed by the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. During my time, time as town moderator, I have continued the tradition of honoring one of our veterans by asking them to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we honor Louis Esposito.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, a moment of silence to honor the memory of any town residents and employees who have passed away since our previous town meeting, with special thanks to those who volunteer their time to make Oxford a better community. And there are many names since the last time, but I would like to especially mention our former selectman, John Sad. Thank you very much for your attention. Introduction of officials and boards. To my left is our town council, then our town clerk, our town manager, our finance director, treasurer-collector on this side, on my right, town assessor on my left, director of planning and economic development to my right, DPW director on my right, police chief and fire chief. The board of selectmen to my left is our chairman, and to my right are the other members of the board. Down on the floor to my right is the Oxford School Committee and members of Bay Path. To my right in the front is our planning board, and to my left in the front is our finance committee. The finance committee is appointed by the town moderator, and it's especially important at town meeting because they represent you, the residents and voters of Oxford. They are your eyes and ears. Each and every article presented tonight is debated in advance of town meeting, and the finance committee will give their recommendation before each vote. Parliamentary procedure. The town of Oxford uses Town Meeting Time as their official handbook of parliamentary law. A copy is available at the Oxford Free Public Library. The blue book, no, actually, what was the book tonight? The articles? We'll skip that part. One motion I would like to highlight is point of order. I always do my best to conduct meetings that are legal and fair. However, I am human and I do make mistakes. If you believe I have made an error, there is no reason to get upset or angry. Simply call out point of order and we will make it right. Many towns have lists of rules that are pages long. I like to keep things simple. I believe strongly in a person's First Amendment right to free speech. However, I believe equally in mutual respect and civility. Personal attacks are not permitted and are often counterproductive. Please make your case for or against the article or idea at hand, not a particular person or group. We all came in as neighbors. Let's be respectful and leave as friends, even if we have to agree to disagree. Town meeting is the purest form of democracy. You, the voters, are the legislature. After hearing discussion, both pro and con, it is up to you to decide what is best for you, your family, and your community. This is best accomplished by keeping an open mind and sharing your thoughts and concerns with everyone, by being recognized by the moderator to speak, then using the microphone up front so that everyone can hear you. Please remember to start by clearly announcing your name and street address for the town clerk's records. If you are planning to speak on an article, come forward to save time. There are seats right in the front here. If you are offering an amendment to an article, it must be in writing, and the town clerk will provide you with an amendment worksheet to guide you. And that's a copy of what it looks like right here. You cannot move the question to cut off debate. If you were the previous speaker, the moderator always has the right to decide if opposing views have had equal time. And finally, I'd like to share a quote from Town Meeting Time. No wonder is to speak impertinently besides the question, superfl- superfluously or tediously, so don't be that person. Please silence any electronic devices you may have. At this time, I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the warrant in its entirety. It's been moved and seconded. Actually, it was moved, seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, actually, hold up your cards. All those opposed, hold up your cards. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Article one is to hear the reports of any town offices or committees. I'm not aware of any. Are there any reports this evening? Then we move on to Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to pay invoices from a prior fiscal year or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article two is passed over.
It's been moved and seconded to pass over Article two. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing over Article two, please hold up your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please hold up your cards. And Article two is passed over. Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation or transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money to the capital stabilization fund or act thereon, sponsored by the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $100,000 be transferred from free cash and be appropriated to capital stabilization fund for the fiscal year 2022.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation from the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends.
Finance committee does recommend. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article three, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Article three passes unanimously. Microphone just will not stay still. Article four, to see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the Free Public Library located at 339 Main Street, Oxford, identified as Assessor's Map 34C, parcel B04, from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Library Trustees or act thereon. This is sponsored by the Board of Library Trustees.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the Free Public Library located at 339 Main Street, Oxford, identified as Assessor's Map 34C, parcel B04, from the Board of Selectmen to the Board of Library Trustees at such time as a perpetual historic preservation restriction on said land and building to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts by and through the Massachusetts Historical Commission is on record at the Worcester County Registry of Deeds.
It's been moved and seconded, and this does require a two-thirds vote. Recommendation by the finance committee?
The finance committee did not take a position on this article.
And recommendation of the planning board?
Planning board recommends.
Planning board does recommend. Any questions or comments on Article four? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article four, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Article two, Article four passes, and I do declare a two-thirds vote. Article five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money for elevator repairs and HVAC repairs at the Free Public Library located at 339 Main Street, Oxford, including any costs incidental or related thereto or act thereon, sponsored by the town manager and DPW director.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $87,000 be transferred from free cash and be appropriated for elevator repairs and HVAC repairs at the Free Public Library located at 339 Main Street, Oxford, including any costs incidental or related thereto.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee does recommend.
Fin- finance committee does recommend. Recommendation of the planning board?
Planning board recommends.
The planning board also recommends. Are there any questions or comments on Article five? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article five, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Article five passes. Article six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money for hazardous materials abatement to facilitate the demolition of the Jocelyn Annex Building located at 8 Maple Road, Oxford, including any costs incidental or related thereto or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager and the DPW director.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $200,000 be transferred from free cash and be appropriated for hazardous materials abatement to facilitate the demolition of the Jocelyn Annex Building located at 8 Maple Road, Oxford, including any costs incidental or related thereto.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee does recommend.
Finance committee recommends. Recommendation of the planning board?
Planning board recommends.
Planning board also recommends. Are there any questions or comments on Article six? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article six, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article six, please raise your cards. Okay, Article six passes unanimously. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money for emergency repair of failed roadway culverts located at Industrial Park West Road and Prospect Street, including any costs incidental or related thereto or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager and the DPW director.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $80,000 be transferred from free cash and be appropriated for emergency repair of failed roadway culverts located at Industrial Park West Road and Prospect Street, including any costs incidental or related thereto.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee does recommend.
Finance committee recommends. Recommendation of the planning board?
Planning board recommends.
Planning board also recommends. Any questions or comments on Article seven? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article seven, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article seven, please raise your cards. Article seven passes. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase or and/or eminent domain for general municipal purposes, and on such terms and conditions as Board of Selectmen deem appropriate, all or a portion or portion of the parcel of land located at 335 Main Street and identified as Assessor's Map 34C as parcel C04, and to transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money as funding for such acquisition and costs incidental or related thereto, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments on behalf of the town as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the purpose of this article or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager, the DPW director, and facilities.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article eight is passed over.
Been moved and seconded to pass over Article eight. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee did recommend this article, but...
Okay, originally, the finance committee recommended.
Right.
Recommendation of the planning board?
We also recommended the article is written.
Okay. Originally, the planning board also recommended this. Any questions or comments on passing over Article eight?
I was just wondering, Joe Di Pasquale for Clarence Drive.
Hi.
I was just wondering if we could get an explanation of why it's passed over, if it was going to be taking to help the town. I read that we, the finance committee recommended at one point, and now it's being passed over. I just don't understand why it's being passed over. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Sure. Excellent question. This has been a property that the town has looked at both for leasing in the past, and it became vacated. The problem with the current situation is that we don't have enough information to move forward, even though we have support from both the finance committee and the planning board. The owners of the property have recently had two actual proposals to buy the property, where earlier, they had no proposals. We may be coming back with this proposal in the future, but for now, our biggest hope was that we might get it granted to the town or donated to the town, and that doesn't look like that's going to happen right now because they're not in a position to negotiate with us because they have two offers on the table. So, you know, maybe in the spring, if it's still vacated, we'll have another opportunity. So, I felt it was prudent to pass over it this evening because we don't have all the information to make an informed decision on behalf of the townspeople. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on Article eight? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote to pass over Article eight. All those in favor of passing over Article eight, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to passing over Article eight, please raise your cards. All right. Article eight passes to pass over it. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds and appropriate a sum of money for professional engineering services for the 25% design effort under the State Transportation Improvement Program for the Main Street Corridor Improvements Project or act thereon. This is sponsored by the town manager and DPW director.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $200,000 be transferred from free cash and be appropriated for professional engineering services for the 25% design effort under the State Transportation Improvement Program, otherwise known as the TIP program, for the Main Street Corridor Improvement Project.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee does recommend.
Finance committee recommends. Recommendation of the planning board?
The planning board recommends.
Planning board also recommends. Any questions or comments on Article nine? Oh, I see a hand.
Gina Riley for Fort Hill Road. Can we be given an explanation of what this is going to involve for the Main Street?
The question was, does somebody have an explanation of what they plan on doing?
Good evening. I'm Jared Duval, your DPW director. So, are you asking, assuming, about the scope of the design at this point, Ms. O'Reilly?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, we're very preliminary. It's, we're at 15% design basically at this stage. So, we have a detailed base plan survey of all of Main Street from front to fair lawn. We do have some line work down for the design. So, the design at this point is essentially, it's similar to what was brought forward to the town previously, but we're not at a point just yet that it will be, you know, brought forward for a public information meeting yet. That process will happen, though. There will be public outreach. There will be public input to what the design holds. So, essentially, this would fund up to that 25% design process. It's a very intensive stage of the TIP review process with DOT to generate buy-in from them to get the project actually slated for a funding year on the TIP. So, it's, it takes, it's a significant sum, at 200,000, to get there, but really, to get to that 25%, it represents about 60% of the total cost of design. So, I talked about this at Finance Committee a week or so ago. That brings the, the total design cost to about 600,000 to 700,000, which is significant, but what's at stake is 600,000 to 700,000 upwards of that for construction that would be fully funded 100% by the state once this project is funded in a TIP year, so...
Any other questions or comments on Article nine?
I have a question.
Please, please come up.
Chris Everett, 8 Worcester Road. What is the big push with renovating this stretch of Main Street? We voted it down at the last meeting, and now we're bringing it back up again.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, well, the push is that, I mean, we have a deteriorating road, right? It's in fairly good shape at this point, but this plan is really looking, you know, five years out potentially. So, what will the road look like then, right? And it's not as simple as just repaving a road like Main Street with all the pedestrian facilities that are associated with it, the drainage improvements that'll likely need to be done. We're looking at a real big project essentially to renovate and repair Main Street. So, we're looking at this avenue to qualify for this funding with an investment from the town, but really to gain millions, like mentioned, to really provide an impactful project downtown. Obviously, there's some safety concerns that's, you're seeing the Main Street pedestrian improvement project right now is sort of phase one in those improvements downtown to make it safe for all users. That's motorists, pedestrians. So, this project is going to be, you know, could be a few years, five years, let's say, minimum, down the road, but will really be the full-scale improvements to downtown. And that could mean, you know, some traffic calming measures. It's just very expansive, an expansive, wide pavement down there right now. So, we just want to make sure that we're providing, you know, a safe, a safe road throughout Main Street, through quaint downtown, that really enhances the aesthetic of downtown.
Now, I'm glad you said that, you know, wide expensive, you know, expansive pavement. That's what we'd like to see. Now, during the construction, I'm glad you're showing this picture of the Grace Church. I actually plow the Grace Church. That's going to be very difficult now to handle that. Now, they got construction going on right now. Two cops directing traffic, not directing traffic. Construction workers just darting out right in front of me. I had to jack on my brakes earlier today not to hit a construction worker, and the cops just go, oops, my bad. I mean, people just need to stop, look, listen, and acknowledge the driver before they cross the road. That is going to be a major problem come time for wintertime when the state or our DPW is plowing Main Street. What's going to happen when one of our plow trucks hit that at 30 miles an hour?
I think we're getting off the track of Article nine, but thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments on Article nine? Why don't you come up and use the mic, please?
Gina Riley, Fort Hill. I am concerned because as I'm listening to this and listening to a little bit of your explanation, what I'm hearing is that this is very similar to the project that was put forth a year or two years ago, only it's coming in a different way. And I am concerned about what's going to happen to that Main Street in the end, and this is a lot of money. That is my concern, and that's the concern of many people in Oxford because I don't think we expected this to be what was presented a couple of years ago. Concerned.
Thank you.
So, so it was a similar process, though. This was, it was always a TIP-funded project when it was brought forth before the town the first go-around. So, we're just not at that point now, you know, to facilitate public feedback on it. We're very, very early in the design phase. So, there will be a time and a place for that to get Historic Commission involved, to get all of the public involved, to have, you know, a say as to what may... to have, you know, a say as to what Main Street will look like, you know, to reimagine what it could look like.
Thank you.
Collect H. 105 Charlton Street. I was at the very first meeting that they had on this, and I've never heard another meeting in going over things. "Oh, we'll come back to you before we do anything more." All of a sudden, now we've got to vote this money in for architecture designs. We've never even approved this, or we were supposed to work out details. Another meeting has never come forth for the public to attend. There was only one.
Okay.
If, if, no, no.
No, no.
If, if, if. I'm asking, why?
Don't throw out three questions. Let's take them one at a time. First of all, was there any input?
I think there may be a bit of confusion. We did have a public forum, and I invited many people butters with the conceptual idea that we were going to actually begin a process to see if we could tap into state money. As you can see, later on in the warrant, we're going to be talking about roads and not having enough money. Every community that has state roadways or shares those, the only way to get state funding is to get at a certain design phase. We do this and have done it with Charlton Street and many other projects that you'll see throughout the region. But you can't even be considered for that unless you have a conceptual design phase. Our engineer and DPW director does this with multiple roads, because it's his job. We're not professional engineers. So, it was important to at least have a public forum at the conceptual part. But at the end of the day, once the process gets put on a TIP, that's usually many, many years. So, I don't want people thinking this is happening tomorrow, and there's not going to be any input. All you have to do is look at how the state will handle any transportation improvement project. And there's multiple phases for public input, and there's multiple opportunities for the town to weigh in on design. So, this is conceptual, you heard that. It is not the final at all. And so, I think that would hopefully answer your question. There hasn't been any shooting down of money for this. This has been a normal, small engineering initiative taken on by the DPW Department, like they do on many other things. And they will continue, like I had said before, to offer input when it's at those different phases. So, nothing has actually really occurred since that public forum. This is an opportunity to get to the next step, to provide more details. And I have confidence in our DPW Director then and today to be able to provide that kind of opportunity for public input. Thank you.
I have to say, though, at that meeting, you never did say anything about that we had to come up with all of this money. You know, you come down Sutton Ave., and you see, "Welcome to the historic." Well, changing Main Street takes away the historic. And from the last meeting...
I think your question has been answered, that there will be input.
But you want us to put out all this money first.
They didn't ask for money in the past, and that's what this article does.
And then also at the last meeting was, is that about the crosswalks and everything else. What is being done was not even what was talked about. It's a total, whole, different structure of it. And I just don't think everything is being presented to us.
That's not part of Article 9. Thank you.
It's Main Street.
Thank you for your comments.
So, Chris Everett, Olister Road, again. I'm looking at both these pictures, and again, with the expansive pavement we have. So, in other words, we can't get state funding without bicycle lanes? Is that what, that's what it is? Okay. A gallon of paint is cheap. Paint some bicycle lanes on the side of the road.
You're not going to get the same level of protection. You know, the state discourages just painted lanes with no buffer to traffic. So, the goal now is to separate those facilities. And the state does. The state looks at these projects statewide, right? They're ranking these projects. They're looking at multimodal accommodation. It's just how, the way things are moving now to accommodate pedestrians and bikes. So, that'll be a decision as part of the public process. Folks will need to decide. If that's important, if they want to receive this funding from the state upwards of, you know, $6 to $7 million, then that kind of comes along with the package. It could mean some separated bike facilities off in the tree lawn area, so.
But I mean, once the bicycle lane ends, where do the bicyclists go? Back onto the sidewalk or back onto the road? So, you've got an unsafe area beyond this mile stretch. What, you know, with all this, what the heck's the difference?
And that'll be the state's, you know, the state takes it from there with their right-of-way to accommodate, to, you know, follow suit.
Again, it's been explained that this is just a concept.
I'll donate the gallon of paint. Just paint the...
No, I'm in the blank, Levitt Road, Oxford. From a Planning Board standpoint, we really don't want to lose the parking on Main Street. That's something that we had a bylaw change last meeting to encourage more businesses to come downtown. And we passed this at a town meeting to make sure that on-street parking can be counted towards customer requirements. And so, I think that's why you're getting the input now. We don't want to see a design, and all of a sudden, there's no parking on Main Street. The other, the other thing is that I think people are concerned about the pavement. Nobody's really concerned about the sidewalk or the green strip. We want to make sure that the pavement is nice and wide. So, whether that needs one lane with a bicycle lane and parking, which may end up the same width of paving, that would be fine. But again, we want to make you aware of this now, so you don't come back with a design and say, "There's no parking on Main Street."
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blank. I can appreciate that. And then, you know, as part of the design process, too, we need to look at it from the standpoint of an engineering perspective, you know, traffic safety. You know, expansive pavement contributes to excessive speeds. You know, part of the reason why you're seeing the project happening now is because of the expansive pavement and the big lane widths out there, is that if you have someone that's stopped at a crosswalk for somebody passing, you know, we've seen so many near misses where people go, just try to go right around them, right? And nearly hit that person as they pass by that stop car. So, those are the types of considerations. I know that there's, if there's a particular appeal to that aesthetic, I understand that. And ultimately, it's not my Main Street to change. I get that. But there are some serious safety considerations and functional improvements that, as engineers, we like to make or try to make. But again, it's not going to be, this will be brought forward at a public meeting, and everyone will have a chance to weigh in.
One more quick question.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
David Carter, Maid Marian Street. So, I think unfairly, I think there's a lot of criticism towards it. One of the things I think I brought up at the original planning meeting, that I was there, because it was at the police station, if I'm not mistaken, to get a 10x multiplier on the $700,000 that would cost the town is an extremely good deal. What I would say is, and one of the concerns that I brought up is losing the width in the lanes and then squeezing the parking in alongside it. I could see a lot of accidents happening with it. So, I think that's where, I guess, the bike lane looks unnecessary. I understand you need it to meet certain requirements. But, I mean, you say wide roads, you know, lead to speed. Newly paved roads lead to speed. You know, just anybody that, you know, lives in Sherwood Forest can tell you that. Nice new paved roads, people fly up on 40 miles an hour. So, I think realistically, the bang for the buck is there. I agree with you. When it comes to, like, adding more juts, it's going to add a lot, a lot to the plowing. It's going to make it a lot more difficult. There's going to be a lot of accidents, a lot of damages, a lot of replacing. But realistically, if you're going to put up $700,000 as a town, you know, yeah, $200,000 upfront, it's a lot of money for just planning. But to get $7 million back, that's a really good return on investment. And so, I think in that aspect, unfair criticism in certain areas.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Sir?
And then, just one more quick question, Jared. How would we handle removing the snow on that bicycle lane? Because that looks very, very narrow to me. The equipment that we...
Once, once again, that's not part of our...
Well, we need to think about that before doing it.
Okay, it's a good suggestion.
Because that's another piece of equipment that we have to buy. We have the new sidewalks up on Sutton Ave. We don't have a machine small enough for them. Now you've got these...
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I don't see any other people that want to speak, so I think we can, we're ready to call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 9, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed to Article 9, please raise your cards. And the eyes have it, Article 9 passes. It's not even close to half. We can see from the, from the cards. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling legislation and appropriate a sum of money to pay costs of engineering, designing, constructing, and reconstructing roadways throughout the town, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, provided, however, that this appropriation is to be raised by borrowing. Any borrowing authorization shall be contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2 1/2 Debt Exclusion Referendum under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), or Act Thereon. This is sponsored by the Town Manager and the DPW Director.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $5 million to pay costs of engineering, designing, constructing, and reconstructing roadways throughout the town, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Selectman, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, from C1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. No amount shall be borrowed or expended hereunder unless the town shall have voted to exclude the amounts required to repay any such borrowing from the limitation on total property taxes set forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), also known as Proposition 2 1/2. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount.
It's been moved and seconded. This does require a 2/3s vote. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend. Recommendation of the Planning Board?
Planning Board recommends.
Planning Board also recommends Article 10. Are there any questions or comments on Article 10?
I have one question. And this is a hypothetical, I guess, question. Chris Everett, Eight Olister Road, again. Do we have a calculation on how much more in taxes this will cost on a $300,000 house?
All right, we have a presentation.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jared Duvall, again, DPW Director. Very pleased to be able to provide some insight into this proposed borrowing. I'll just start by saying, you know, our job as town officials is to solve problems. And one of our biggest problems, and is for most communities, is addressing aging infrastructure. And that's especially true for towns' largest asset, which is usually their roadway network. Last year, the town came to you with an aggressive $15 million borrowing to repair many roads, the majority of the roads, over that borrowing period. It passed unanimously at town meeting, but it failed at the ballot box. Still recognizing the need to do something about Oxford's roads and hearing your call to action, we have another borrowing here tonight before you. And it's smaller in scale, a smaller overall commitment at $5 million, but still aggressive in nature that we would get all this work done, hopefully, in a short, three-year time span, and make a substantial improvement to Oxford's pavement network. And we're hoping that this would serve as a demonstration of what we can accomplish with a large infusion to our budget. The goal of my presentation tonight is to just lay out simply the facts and all the details surrounding this borrowing and surrounding the state of Oxford's pavement management system, so that you may make an informed decision now and hopefully at the ballot box should this pass, on how the town proceeds in addressing Oxford's streets. I'm hoping that most of you have the handout, which should serve as a nice synopsis of this presentation, as well as several maps that we'll go over here in just a moment. I'll start by discussing the concepts behind pavement management and how that relates to Oxford's roadway network and our pavement management system, before getting into the details of the borrowing itself. So, what is pavement management? Well, the long-form definition here is it's a data-driven practice of objectively planning for pavement maintenance and rehabilitation with the goal of maximizing the value and life of a pavement network. Or more simply put, getting the biggest bang for your buck. So, the key word in that definition is objective. So, with many more repair projects in our backlog than we have funding available, we have to objectively prioritize somehow and use some objective criteria to program our annual repairs. And this is an industry-standard thing. This is what many cities and towns, not just in the Commonwealth do, but nationwide, is have this pavement management system, this data-driven system. So, a little background on the process, a pavement management program process. It starts with a roadway inventory and GIS mapping. So, the maps that you have in your hands there are GIS maps. Those are the maps that have that inventory of our roads, nearly 90 miles of public road miles. That's what Oxford has currently. Following that, we do on an annual basis, a third of the town's roads, excuse me, we do a roadway survey and distress identification, and then score the roads on a 0 to 100 scale. And that's called the Pavement Condition Index, or PCI. At the same time, we're also defining our repair alternatives and the unit costs for those repairs. These are essentially the tools in our toolbox, your crack seals, your chip seals, shim and overlays, and pavement reclamation, all of the repair alternatives at our disposal. And those repairs typically fall into treatment bands that you'll see on that chart in the right, going down based on PCI, either doing nothing on a newly paved road for a few years, to routine maintenance, which might be your crack sealing or patching, preventative maintenance, your chip seals, structural improvements, you get into your overlays, asphalt overlays, and then base rehab is essentially starting from scratch. So, once we've done that and developed our toolbox, per se, we'll take a look at various budget scenarios inside our pavement management software. And we'll see what our funding need is, or we'll see how those funding levels impact the pavement network. From there, we can then have the system develop a list of candidate projects, which are based on these objective criteria here that looks at roadway classification. So, is that road a main arterial thoroughfare? Or is it a local road? Is it a collector's street? It looks at average daily traffic volumes on those streets. And then it also considers the pavement condition index. And what it's really trying to do is capture roads before they fall into a lower treatment band. That's really the secret there, so that you can catch them before the costs increase to repair. And then, once we've developed these lists, we apply some engineering and local judgment just based on our historical knowledge and point of reference. We call that ground-truthing. We go out to make sure that, you know, we're checking the system. So, behind the pavement management theory and the system itself is the pavement deterioration curve that you see here behind me. curve that you see here behind me. And essentially just depicts the life of a pavement. And then as it goes by, if it goes untouched, it'll start to decline and the repairs, the costs go up tremendously. So if you look at, it costs a dollar within 40% of a pavement's life versus $50 at failure per square yard, essentially, if we don't catch it in time. So the key to sound pavement management is essentially it's doing the right repair on the right road at the right time. As it relates to, or as Oxford's program or pavement network relates to that deterioration curve, the average road condition in Oxford is a 62. So it falls right there in the structural improvement band, and that's a D minus. It's certainly not good. The following map is a current conditions PCI map. Hopefully, all of you have that in front of you there. And this is, is, again, an example of the GIS maps that we're able to produce and help with our analysis. But you can see a whole lot of red streets on that map. And it's essentially, it's mapping the PCI on each street from the lowest PCI to the highest. Again, red being not good and blue being what we want to see. And really, I think what you're seeing on this map, while unfortunate, is a demonstration of what we've been saying here for a little while now, is, you know, unfortunately, with a limited budget, the system and what we try to do is stretch our dollars to the, as wise as possible essentially. And that means hitting a lot of the main thoroughfares. You see blue roads, Leicester, you know, Leicester Street, Route 56, Old Webster Road, Dudley Road, Sutton Ave, you know, Charlton Street, a lot of these main thoroughfares that are in blue and have been done. But unfortunately, the local streets have fallen by the wayside. The next chart showing a distribution of conditions behind me here is, is just another graphic of, of that map, essentially putting it to a chart. And you'll see a large concentration of road miles here that fall in that rehabilitation category. And really, what we're trying to do as pavement engineers and in DPWs, we're, we're trying to move as many miles out of that band and into the lower-cost maintenance category that we can. The current backlog, state of the system here, if you look at the chart on the left, pie chart, out of Oxford's 90-plus-or-minus public lane miles, over half of Oxford's roads need structural improvement. So that's either a mill and overlay or shim and overlay, some form of asphalt overlay. And we're approaching nearly $20 million in backlog. And that's essentially the cost if we were to go and fix every road today. That's what it would So a brief funding and repair history here. Funding for roadway repairs here in town and in most communities starts with Chapter Ninety monies, which is essentially state aid funded through gas tax revenue. Each community's allocation is determined based on public road miles, employment rates, and population. And for the past several years, it's hovered around $500,000 for, for Oxford. A local contribution had started, and this was when we were in the midst of our, the early stages of our pavement management program, which was showing you needed more. We needed more to, to make improvement or to at least maintain the network average here in town. So a local contribution started around 2015, 2016, and then at our urging, a local match since 2017, which all of the analysis was showing, $1 million is really required to maintain and not lose ground. And from 2017 to now, it's essentially, what's happened is sort of what we predicted, right? It's, it stayed right around a 62, the network average, and we've not been able to gain much ground. And from 2014, since we've been really keeping a detailed log of repairs in this particular pavement management software system, we've made about 25 plus-or-minus miles of repairs to Oxford Streets. So knowing the state of the roadway system, we then looked at a budget analysis and explored some funding scenarios to see, you know, what can we accomplish here? What, what do we really need? And we knew that the $15 million was probably, you know, a little aggressive, especially coming out of COVID. So let's go back and look at what maybe a smaller borrowing would do, or a trial borrowing even you could call it. So the two funding scenarios we looked at, we looked at our current funding levels, which is the Chapter Ninety plus the local match, bringing us to $1 million a year. And then we wanted to compare that to the current funding plus the infusion of this $5 million bond. And the idea would be that we dispersed the bond, the $5 million, over the first three years of the borrowing. And what we found, in summary, quickly here, is that the current funding, as expected, over the next three years, the network PCI was maintained. The current funding plus the borrowing yielded a 10-point improvement in the network PCI, bringing us up to a 72, so a full-grade improvement with that added funding. So then, why borrow? Well, hopefully, with some of the information in the maps that you've seen and the state of our system, you, you see that the current funding is simply just not enough. And Oxford's roadway repair budget is, really requires a large infusion to move as many roads from that structural rehab category into that lower-cost preventative maintenance category. Interest rates are very low right now. And funding capital improvements, as we've been, is, you know, from annual operating funds, is inadvisable and not really sustainable, that, that local match coming out of operating funds. There is local precedent as well, not that that's a primary reason, but as, I think, recent as 2018, Spencer had borrowed $19 million or started that borrowing to address their roadway network. So that would be enough to really address all of Oxford Streets. But a $5 million borrowing, nonetheless, we can accomplish quite a bit. So, and that's what I'd like to talk about here now. So as mentioned, it'd be a $5 million borrowing distributed over the first three years of the bond, paid back over 15 years. In that time, and within that first three years, we'd accomplish 32 miles of total road repairs, 22 miles of which would be capital improvements, about 68% of that mileage, and those are actual paving projects, the balance of which would be your preventive maintenance, your crack sealing, your surface treatments like chip seals and micro-surface overlays, those sorts of things that protect the town's investment that's already been made in its roads. So now, turning to the maps. If you have the current PCI, 2021 current PCI map, along with the 2024 PCI projection at current funding levels, no surprise, as we mentioned, it's, it doesn't change, and you still see a whole sea of red on that map. When you look at the impacts of the $5 million bond against the current PCI map, and then looking at the 2024 projection, hopefully, you're seeing a whole sea of blue on there. And that's that 10-point improvement over a short three years. And then the final two maps are actually looking at a preliminary roads program and actually highlighting the streets that we would hope to repair with this money, actually providing a plan as, as a demonstration. And you have to qualify these maps, just with a disclaimer. I mean, it's very early in, in the budget process, right, in project development process. But we want to show something, show the townspeople what we hope to accomplish with this money. There's a lot of factors between now and when we would actually construct these roads that would come into play, subject to the bidding market, prevailing wages, things come up in design, costs could increase, but we have built in some contingency. So, so again, the $5 million bond map is a demonstration of what we will strive to accomplish should this money go through. So the $5 million question then is, what will it cost? And there is a, a chart here that demonstrates that over a range of home values. Based on our bonding agent's estimates, it's approximately 26 cents per $1,000 in home valuation. That's an annual figure. So if you look at the orange line at the bottom here, that is for the single-family average assessed value here in town, $240,000, $240,900, excuse me. So at that 26 cents per thousand valuation yields about a $62.17 increase annually, tax impact. The chart here is on a monthly basis. So if we look at the orange line again, the first three years of the borrowing, it's very low impact to the tax rate, paying low, low interest on, interest only. After year three, it jumps up to a maximum of $6.25 added per month. Averaging, though, over those first three years, the entire 15 years, I should say, the average impact per month for that average household, $5.18. And as you move up, the next blue line is for a home valuation of $350,000, and then the darker blue line up top for a home value assessed at $450,000. So you can see how that average monthly impact goes up to $9.68. Now, it's important to note that the net increase over the life of this borrowing could be less, or will be less, because the town will have debt that is going to fall off, including the PD, the police station building. That number's not yet known, so we just wanted to present here what the impact for this borrowing alone would be. So to conclude, having heard the details surrounding the state of Oxford's roads in this proposed borrowing, I'm hopeful that you have all the information required to decide for yourselves if there's enough value in this proposal that it's worth paying for. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Any other questions or comments on Article Ten? I guess you did a great job. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I didn't see you here.
I'm surprised no one in this room has any questions other than me. No surprise.
Joe DePascual, Four Clarence Drive, again. This is a, a difficult thing for me to say. I went to the, to the meeting, and we all know in this town how bad our roads are. So I don't have to talk further about that. But my concern is, you know, the feds are talking about a, a...
Infrastructure?
Yes, infrastructure bill. Thank you. Thank you. And if we borrow this money to do these roadways, and a miraculous thing happens in Washington where we get money from the feds?
We could finish the rest of it.
We could finish the rest of it, but I mean, are they gonna pay off our debt? Or are we gonna be stuck with what we're gonna borrow, which we know is gonna increase our property taxes? Because don't forget, it's not just the borrowing for the streets, we also have to pay for schools and our general government. So you add your regular tax bill, every year goes up anyway, and then you add this on top of it. So it's, it's a little bit difficult. You know, we're, we're going through COVID right now, people lost jobs. I see many homes for sale in town. I'm just really, I'm just really concerned about that. And, you know, I want to commend everybody for doing such a good job. I went to the meeting on Monday, and, you know, Selectman LeBlanc there, and, and all you folks. And it was a very informational meeting and a great presentation. And I'm, I'm in favor of fixing our roads. I just don't, I, I just know what I can afford personally. You know, it's difficult when you're on a fixed income and you have to pay for your own home repairs, your auto repairs, your tax, I mean, your tax bill. And everything, cost of living is, is crazy. And I just don't want to lose my home in the process. It's, that's my big gripe. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Timothy Moriarty, 26 Water Street. Great presentation. I think it's a great plan. I think, you know, I think we've talked a lot about taxes, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about how we could bring the cost of this stuff down. So that's more of a statement. So when the $5 million, you're incidental, so that's a cap. So the incidentals will incur within that $5 million?
Yeah, that's the idea. The, the, again, I had mentioned that these are budget-level estimates, but we've built in contingency that, you know, we're confident these numbers, if anything, are conservative. So...
So there's a margin built into that cost?
That'd be all encompassing for the work that you see there, yes.
Okay. And I'd like to add to the cost for each individual for $11.68, which I know most of our homes might be touching that right now. But I spend more than that at Dunkin' Donuts in the morning, and I know the majority of you do too. So...
A day, maybe, like a week?
A day. So let's, uh, let's learn where our spending comes from too, rather than just the town. A lot of people drive new cars. I think, I think we can all do a little bit to cut back in their own lives instead of just talking to the town about it. So I'm with you. Thank you.
So I assume we want the roads to Dunkin' Donuts to be a priority?
We want Dunkin's open past three.
Mark Gaddis, Little John Circle. Have a question for you and your professional opinion. What is the major contribution besides age to the deterioration of our roads in town here?
Sure. We talked about this at the public forum a little bit. Oxford being a rural town, a lot of these local streets were, were simply old cart paths, right? So they were never engineered or meant to withstand the traffic loading that they're seeing, not just by, on a volume basis, but the, the weight of the trucks, the trash trucks. So you've got poor subbase before they even started to doing some sort of, some form of paving, right, which is really just oil and stone, year after year after year. So that's why you're seeing really a, a road that's not withstanding, able to withstand that abuse, essentially.
So my understanding is that when you look at this $5 million plus, you know, to do this over the, the timeframe, to get to these miles of roads, is that a, a complete rehab of the road itself, or is it just an overlay and, or a chew and, and overlay?
So one of the map with the actual program will show some different colors for different treatments. So it, it, again, it's dependent on that criteria, the PCI, so for different PCI levels, yield a different, or warrant a different repair, right? So if it's a little bit higher, it might be a, a chip seal. If it's lower, it'll be a shim and overlay. So that's how it's...
But under the, under the current road conditions, majority of our roads need a total redo or just a...
An overlay, yeah. So they were a lot of, there was a high concentration of lane miles over half, right? 54%, I think, of that 90-plus-or-minus miles that fall into that structural rehab or structural improvement. So that's an overlay, some form of overlay.
Do you think that the truck traffic will lessen over the years or, or stay the same? Because otherwise, we'll be right back the same place we are when it hits 72.
We will, but once we, you know, it's, it's important to keep in mind that we're not done once we do these repairs, right? That we'll be back in a few years to do that preventative maintenance to seal the cracks so there's no water infiltration, because that's really the other thing that's contributing to a lot of these roads. Once they start to move and there's, we have, we're in New England, right? So you freeze, freeze thaw cycles. That water infiltration tends to exacerbate things faster as well. But with an overlay, we're adding some structure to that road. So we might not be solving the problem, but we are beefing up that cross-section and adding a structural layer to it. So that will help. It will help with...
Help support more traffic or the same traffic?
Thank you for your question. Selectman LeBlanc?
Good evening. Cheryl LeBlanc, 11 Foster Street. No relation to Norm LeBlanc, just so everyone is aware. We just happen to have the same last name. Jared, I'd like to, if I could, first of all, you had a great presentation on Monday. You were able to answer some questions for me, which was very helpful. I'd like to just talk a little bit, if we could, if this does get passed. You've made mention of the fact that this is step one, and it's an opportunity for the town to see how this gets executed. And so I'd like to just go one step beyond that and maybe address town meeting in terms of how do you intend to communicate progress? Do you have, I mean, the roads are a big thing. Are we going to appoint a superintendent of roads or something along those lines? And it's important because the success of this $5 million in this passage of this debt exclusion is the next step to the second phase and the third phase. Because what's ultimately gonna end up happening is people are going to start asking you, when are you doing my road? And I'd like to hear how we're gonna be able to communicate that out to the residents if this should pass. Thank you.
Sure. So one of my goals is really to get, to be as transparent as possible. And if you visit our webpage, you'll see a lot of information, hopefully, on the projects that we have ongoing, the cost, the contractor, a lot of the details, the goals, you know, behind those projects. You know, the next step, if this should pass, is to actually drill down and, and look at the roads that we have here. What are we gonna do in year one, two, and three? And even beyond that, with our pavement management program, the goal of mine is to get, you know, a nice posting on our webpage where we can put out, you know, this is our annual program. This is what we intend to do this year. And we've been communicating a lot to, I, I think, with outreach on social media, trying to keep people informed of what we're doing with particular projects or all of our projects. So that would continue, certainly. So, so that's what I would look to do, you know, public outreach early and often throughout this.
Joe Bodry, 18 Clarence Drive. My, my one ask, or not ask, a question on this $5 million is, would this be paying everything upfront over that time span? Or would it just be used year-over-year for your projected timeline?
It would be paying the cost of those projects. So, you know, as we're moving along through years, you know, one through three, essentially. So we would borrow X amount. It'd be, it's one-and-a-half million in year one, plus our current annual budget. So a, a two-and-a-half million dollar year-one budget, same with year two. And then three, it would jump up to $3 million. So we would borrow so that we could fund the costs of the project in that given year, essentially.
There's a chart behind me that'll help you.
Yeah. So, so with just the current rate of inflation and like increase of materials, is there a concern that this will not cover as much road as you think it will over that time?
There, there is. And, and the, the system's pretty good in that we build in not only contingency, but when we're programming this, say now, for years two, three, four, five, the system actually adds inflation, and it actually deteriorates those roads. So, which is pretty slick, right? Because if we're looking at a road in year five, and we're gonna look at it says, and it says, well, that road's gonna actually slip down into a lower treatment band, we'll move that up closer, right? So we catch it before it does. So all that's built into our valuation and analysis, both inflation and then the deteriorated PCI. So we have the better sense of the cost to address that road in year three, four, or five, whatever it may be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Yule, Two Conlon Road. There's one thing that's not in your system, weather permitting. So when you say you're gonna do my road on Conlon Street next year, and the road on Faramont Street washes out, or like what just happened, we just approved the $87,000 for the culverts. We have an early frost or a hard frost, we have a heavy rain, whatever. This is New England. So you're gonna be wrong to me when you say to me, I'm gonna fix your road next year, and something else happens. So what's not enough, what, what people have to leave with tonight, two words, weather permitting. So you could be right, the program could be right, but Mother Nature is always right. So I want people to understand, this is all factored on weather permitting. And the harsh reality is, we live in New England, and the roads reflect that. So that's my only point on this.
Thank you, Mr. Yule. Yeah, there's a host of factors that could change things. That's why... Yeah, there's a host of factors that could change things, that's why, you know, really eager to put this information out there, but we always have to add a bit of a disclaimer, right? That things could change, just because of unknowns at the time. We don't really know until we get into the design or get a little further along.
Dave Grenier, Manor Lane. First of all, I just want to compliment you, this is a great presentation, it's concise, informative, so I commend you for doing it. I guess, and forgive me if you answered this already, but I want to just piggyback on Mr. Deepak Squall's question. Does it make sense to hold off on this evening if there's a infrastructure bill passed and then bring this up in the springtime? Or at the next meeting, wherever that is?
Well, when you have a backlog that's approaching $20 million right now, I think it'd be safe to say that this money's going to go to use regardless, right? So...
Okay. I'm in favor of it, I just didn't know the answer to that. Thank you.
Clerk H. 105 Chauton Street, all sounds great, presentation great. On former speaker, one thing we need to realize is that this town has a great amount of elderly residents that are barely holding on, number one. Number two, she asked, "How are you going to keep us informed?" And the word comes back, "Social media, social media." But I'm sorry, there is a lot of elderly people who are not on social media, and they are the ones that need to be kept informed as well, because they are taxpayers, they are part of all of this. But basically, everything going on social media is excluding them. And all of this isn't final until we actually have voting in November, no matter if it passes or fails here. If it fails, it's done. But if it passes, it has to be voted on. But everything is so relying on social media, and there is a good percentage of our town, people who are not computer-friendly, who are not social media, so we need to address that. How can you address that?
I'll just say that a lot of the information we put on social media, it's also mailed out to folks. We send out a paper mailing ahead of any project, a notification, we at least try to give a week notice, but, you know, folks that may be on a particular road, they'll hear about it from the mailing as well.
When we had Chauton Street, we never got a mailing. So, I mean, it doesn't always happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Dave Canarkeoli, 53 Old Howard Road, also the chairman of the school committee. I do want to compliment you too, that was a great presentation. So I am going to put an educational spin on this, just so we can think about it. Going from a D-minus to a C-minus is growth, and that is great, we always want to look at growth, but we have to continue to raise the bar. So I heard select person LeBlanc just talk about, "What is Plan B and C?" So what are we doing after this $5 million piece, right? What is the next phase? I heard you just indicate that it's on the website, but I would like to hear it publicly. So what is next? Because initially, it was $15 million, so is it safe to say this is a third of the project? So is there going to be another $5 million phase after that? And just like to hear that.
That's kind of how it's contemplated at this point, right? That this is sort of a pilot run, or a trial run, a smaller commitment, just so we can demonstrate what we can accomplish, and then that we would come back potentially in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I love the pilot run, and that's great, but to John's point too, I mean, if some streets don't get done, like, I'm all for it. We've been putting Band-Aids on something that needs stitches for years in this town, right? So I'm all for it, but I also, my street's pretty horrific, so if I'm one that doesn't get it, I want to know what's happening in three years. So I understand it's a trial phase, but if it doesn't work, are we just saying that's it?
No, we'll continue to program. I mean, this is a three-year, usually program five years out, right? So this is a real short-term aggressive plan. And while we're in the midst of this plan, we can plan for the next three years. You know, we'll be running the same sort of analytics, and, you know, if we have to at that point, just figure on what the current budget would be, independent of a borrowing, we'll do that, we'll do that analysis. But the idea would be that, you know, we're still going to be in a need for a large infusion, right? We've, we're only going to be 32 miles...
Well, right, it was 15 originally, right? So obviously, we all can figure it out, there's going to be more money down the line. Again, I'm all for it, I think we just need to hear it. Like, I understand it's in the, it's, we're going to see what it looks like, but we need something, so maybe it's some tweaks within this plan, but there should be a next phase, and then a phase after that.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Gary Watson, 7 Wainav, first to comment and a couple of questions, if I may. I'd like to piggyback on what the lady said about social media. I, for one, do not use social media at all. I don't want anything to do with it. I like to be a low-profile person as much as possible, and keep my things private. So I do not have access to social media. My first question is, this figures on the right-hand side. This is per month, I believe you said?
Yes.
Correct? For how many years, sir?
15.
So, round figures, 12 times 12 is 144, for 15 years.
You should look at the average, though, I just wanted to provide the max for those home values, just as a, because that's actually, the average value is accounting for those first three years of lower, of a lower tax burden.
Okay.
So if you're going to extend that out, you know, over 12 months, times 15 years, that I would use, that's the number to use, the average.
Uh, I know there's a lot of houses in Oxford that are in this 350-plus range, because I track it on a Worcester Telegram Gazette, every Sunday, lists real estate transactions. The ones in my neighborhood I track, I know for a fact, the house next door to me sold a year ago for 320. The one down the street, maybe a little better than mine, but it doesn't have a garage, so for 350. Okay? So if this is per month for 15 years, that adds up to a pretty good figure, especially for people that are on fixed income. I'm fortunate enough to be on fixed income, but I get by. Thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy Moriarty, 26 Water Street, again. So if this passes here today, this only goes to a ballot question, correct? So, 116 people are going to vote here today to move it to a ballot, where, how many voters do we have in town? So let's not let 116 people decide for the rest of the town, I think we should pass this and get it on the ballot and let everybody else decide, rather than just us.
Thank you. All right, unless anybody has something new, I'm ready to call for the vote.
I think it's great that we're going to fix all these roads, but from what I understand, the biggest nuisance are the trash trucks. I live at the end of Lovett Road, there's eight people, we have four different trash trucks. The people that use that road all the time aren't the ones that are ruining these roads, okay? And I know a few years ago, we talked about the trash thing, but I think we really have to revisit that. It's not going to do any good to do all these roads over and have these trash trucks going up and down the street, doing a lot of damage. So I would suggest, not tonight, but at some point, we really look at that again and try to get something where we have less trash trucks. You know, try to get people to use the same trash truck, or whatever you got to do, because I think that those are the vehicles that are really ruining our back roads.
Thank you. We all set? All right, all those who are in favor of Article 10, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article 10, please raise your cards. All right, Article 10 passes, and I do declare a two-thirds vote. Thank you very much. Onto Article 11, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Chapter 23, Marijuana Overlay District, Section 1.0, by deleting the struck-through text and inserting the bold, underlined text, as set forth below, for the purpose of expanding the boundaries of the marijuana overlay district, and to amend the official zoning map of the town of Oxford accordingly. This is sponsored by the town manager and the planning board.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the amendment to the zoning bylaws be adopted as written in the warrant, with the following correction. The depth of the existing MOD along Route 20 is amended to be 550 feet south of the southern line of the Route 20 layout, and the depth of the MOD north of the northern line of Route 20 shall remain 500 feet.
It's been moved and seconded, and this does require a two-thirds vote. There's no recommendation from the finance committee, but do we have a recommendation from the, I'm sorry?
The finance committee, the first, and the planning board.
The finance committee...
And the planning board recommends.
Yeah, the planning board does recommend. Any questions or comments on Article 11?
So, Chris Everett, Old Worcester Road, my question is, if they can, I don't know who "they" is, but if they can request the changing of the zoning, can anybody, anywhere in town, request changing of zoning, in their area?
That has nothing to do with this article.
Well, it does, actually.
It doesn't.
How come they can request to change the zoning to expand it? Let's ask the question that way. How can they do that?
That has nothing to do with this, you're either for or against marijuana being expanded.
That doesn't answer my question, but okay.
Your question doesn't have anything to do with the article that's here. Any other questions or comments on Article 11? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 11, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. All those opposed to Article 11, please raise your cards. Okay, so there are more yays than nays, but it does require a two-thirds vote, so we're going to do an actual count.
It's going to be a troublemaker in every board, you know what I mean?
All right, we're going to get some counters, and just to get an official vote. As I said, there were more, definitely more people for it, but I'm not sure if it was two-thirds. All set? Okay, all those in favor of Article 11, please raise your cards and keep them up until we know that the counters have the right count. Okay, these are all the people for Article 11.
Let me know when they can, sections can quickly.
We're good?
Karen, did you guys get the diaphragm?
Okay, everyone put their cards down, thank you so much. All right, and now I'm going to ask anyone opposed to Article 11, please raise your cards. Are we good on the cards? You can put your cards down, thank you. I must say, our recent usage of the cards is a lot easier to count than when people had to stand. Okay, for Article 11, 76 votes in the affirmative, 45 votes in the negative. As I said, there were more yeses than nos, but it does not pass by a two-thirds vote. So Article 11 does not pass. So Article 11 does not pass. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws. Chapter 19, Sealer of Waits and Measures, Section 3, by deleting the struck-through text and inserting the bold underlined text as set forth below for the purpose of addressing fees therein accordingly. This is sponsored by the Sealer of Waits and Measures.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 12 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee recommends.
Finance committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on Article 12? Sir?
Robert King, 59 Quobag Avenue. The increases are not very large. I just feel that as a matter of principle, we should be setting the fees based on the requirements to fund the, in this case, the Sealer of Waits and Measures, and not just based on what other towns are charging. Just because we can charge more doesn't mean that we should. And it kind of, you know, in some cases, can just turn into a backdoor tax just to raise general revenues rather than just to actually fund the department, which is what it's for.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 12, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. Article 12 passes. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws. Chapter 16, Board of Health, Section 3.0, by deleting Section 3 and 4, therefore, with respect to the appointment of the Inspector of Gas Piping and Gas Appliances in Buildings and the Inspector of Plumbing, and renumber the remaining sections therein accordingly, and further, to amend the general bylaws by inserting therein new Chapter 77, Inspector of Gas Piping and Gas Appliances in Buildings and Inspector of Plumbing, as follows. This is sponsored by the town manager and the building department.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 13 be adopted as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance committee does recommend.
Finance committee does recommend. Any questions or comments on Article 12, 13? All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 13, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed to Article 13, please raise your cards. And Article 13 passes. I want to thank everyone that's come out this evening to participate in your town government, and we look forward to seeing you at the annual meeting in May of next year. And please remember to vote in November. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve town meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please hold up your cards. Opposed? Thank you very much. See you next year.